We'll call the committee to order. I'd like to start with Betty Myers, County Attorney, and Mr. Bill Collins, if you would, lead us in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to take just a moment to recognize our public works that are about to be briefed. But I just want to say that this should get a lot of applause and thanks for handling the two large, actually, we had none of them today, but they had to deal with two large instances in the past two weeks. So Bill, Bill, and the folks from our public works department, thank you so much for being so responsive. Thank you.
Thank you. You guys do a great job. I appreciate it.
The big break we had down there on, was that Porter Street? And the pipe, it's not the kind you just run down to the hardware store and pick up. But because of the good planning and good fortune of our public works department, had to repair a part, ready to go, and fix that in short order, and put people back in service, and that's great. And I think that all the work on the east side of town will be finished tonight. Hopefully, that road will be back open by nine o'clock tonight. People will be back in traffic pattern again. So thank you again for your hard work. We'll thank you all. And all the folks that aren't here tonight, that work with you, let them know how much we appreciate what they do. Be with us. Thank you. I'd like to ask Captain Devin Holland to come forward if he would. Captain Holland has some awards that he would like to make tonight, very important. So Captain Holland, I'll turn it over to you.
Good evening, Mayor, Council, and Administration. Just want to take a brief moment of your time this evening to recognize two gentlemen for their heroic and life-saving actions. On August 19th this year, they put their well-being at risk to save a lady whom they didn't even know. In summary of that accident was the victim was driving her vehicle south on US 441. She left the roadway and was traveling between the two bridges to pass what is now the New Ingles under construction, heading for Ballpark. She went in between the two bridges and went airborne, coming to rest on the roadway below and actually on a Corvette, which that driver fortunately did not receive a straggle on. But when it came to rest, her vehicle caught fire. When the Franklin fire and the Franklin Police Department arrived, it was engulfed in flames. And these two gentlemen rescued the driver prior to us getting there. So if it wasn't for them and following life-saving efforts, she wouldn't be here today. So I'd like to present a life-saving award to these two gentlemen who are present today. First one being Mr. Jeremy Reed of Cleveland. You're welcome. And Mr. Alan Cogburn of the North Carolina Department of Transportation. One of our department's challenge points to be viewed to you. Here you go, Mr. Cogburn. And I think, yeah, you want to pitch up? Actually, there's another guest here. It's the victim herself. She traveled down here to thank you both for what you do. If you want to stand up here. Thank you, Lee.
Thank you so much.
That's what it's all about. People, people glad that no one lost their life in that tragic accident. We're just glad that folks were there to do what needs to be done at the time. So thank you all for that. We have a new employee. We started looking for somebody to help us with code enforcement all about a year ago. And it was such a good job that nobody really wanted to fly for it. This is a great job, working with a lot of good folks, including our own town planner, Mr. Justin Sessor. So Mr. Sessor, if you would, I'd like for you to make an introduction, please, for our new code enforcement officer at this time. Welcome him to our audience.
Good evening, Mayor, County Council. Yeah, it's my privilege to know you. Yeah, I think it was back here about a year ago, we were, maybe a little bit over a year. I think after Amy started, we were becoming council asking for your approval to hire a code enforcement officer. And it took us about 10 months trying to find somebody. Finally, we rested on our search, we rested on Mr. Frank Ballinger. Frank has been a resident of Franklin since 2012, moved into the area with his wife and his young daughter. Frank served in the United States Marine Corps for 14 years, and then additionally, another 10 years with the United States Army before retiring. Then he began a service of nine years with Macon County DSS as an income maintenance case worker. And then in the last year, he's been working for Lowe's before coming to work for us at the town of Franklin. And in the past about a month that Frank's been here, couldn't be more than pleased to have him. He's been eager, going through our ordinances, reading, having a very in-depth and understanding what we're looking for, just some compliance, nothing real heavy-handed, and we took that to heart. I think we've seen, already seen some stuff turn around real quick. So Frank here, if anybody wants, if he wants to say anything? All right. Yep, now, grateful to have you.
Thank you, thank you, thank you. Welcome. We had a chance to talk about Spookers Frank one day, one of his first day or two on the job, and we had a good conversation. And we talked about, you know, what it takes to enforce our code of orders. Our code of orders are there to protect everyone. And we don't, we're not out to say many things we can run, or how many citations we've come up with. We're there to try to get people to comply with the ordinance as a passed duly adopted by the town, to make Franklin a safe, beautiful place for everyone. We appreciate what Frank is doing, look forward to him staying with us for a good while. Thank you, Frank. I want to apologize, I keep taking these glasses off. These are not my normal glasses, these are my Mike Lewis glasses, they're. Anyway, these are my reading glasses, but I broke my other ones the other day, so I have to keep taking them on and off, because if I put them on, I can't see you. If I don't put them on, I can't read what's in front of me, so I apologize ahead of time. We have a proclamation tonight for Constitution Week, and I'd like to have the folks who are here about that presentation and that proclamation to come forward. And I'd like to present this proclamation and read it. This is a proclamation honoring and celebrating Constitution Week 2022, where as September 19th, 2022, marks 235th anniversary of the drafting of the Constitution of the United States of America by the Constitutional Convention. And whereas it is fitting and proper to accord official recognition to this magnificent document and its memorable anniversary, and to the patriotic celebrations which will commemorate this occasion, and whereas public law 915 guarantees the issuing of a proclamation each year by the President of the United States designating September 17th through 23rd as Constitution Week, and whereas all citizens are encouraged to reaffirm the ideals the framers of the Constitution had in 1787 by diligently, vigilantly protecting the freedoms guaranteed to us through this guardian of our liberties, remembering that lost rights may never be regained. Now therefore, it is proclaimed to the Mayor of Franklin, North Carolina, that September 17th through 23rd, 2022, is hereby designated as Constitution Week in the town of Franklin. A witness thereof, whereof, I have entered to set my hand and call the seal of the town of Franklin to be affixed on September 6th, 2022. Thank you. Thank you very much. I would like the Chief of Police and Fire Chief to come up if they would. We have a proclamation towards any of remembrance. It seems likely, it hasn't been that long, but it has been quite a while, since September 11th. And the tragedy that occurred here in our country is something we don't want to ever forget. So we have a proclamation, a day of service and remembrance, which is coming Sunday, September 11th, 2022. Whereas in a non-provoke and senseless act of terrorism, four civilian aircrafts were hijacked on September 11th, 2001, and crashed in New York City, Pennsylvania, and the Pentagon, resulting in a momentous loss of innocent U.S. lives of all heritages. And whereas inspired by the heroism of our nation's public service personnel, military service members, and countless volunteers, our nation found unity and strength. And whereas from the tragedy of September 11th emerged a stronger nation renewed by the spirit of national pride and a true love of country. And whereas Americans have continued to do good by loving their neighbors as they would like to be loved, contributing to relief efforts and volunteering their time to aid those in need. Now therefore, be it resolved that I see Jack Horton, on virtue of the authority vested in the as Mayor of the town of Franklin, to hereby proclaim September 11th, 2022, as a day of service and remembrance in the town of Franklin, and urge our citizens to recognize the heroism of firefighters and law enforcement personnel, military service members, and the many volunteers who responded to those tragic events with courage, selfless compassion, determination, and skill. And do always remember the victims and innocent lives lost as a result of the events on September 11th, 2001, that we never forget. Thank you. And now we have the pleasure of introducing Marian Martinez, who is the Executive Director of Vassinos, did I say that right?
You did.
And she is here to bring us information about what that is and how it affects all of us here in Franklin.
I'm impressed, Mary. This is Spanish. Thanks to all so much for having me today, County Council and everybody here, Administration. Stacy Gavitt helping me for a night today. My name's Marian Martinez, and I'm the Executive Director of a nonprofit called Vassinos. So if you may have heard of us, you may have seen in the past our mobile clinics coming around town. We've been working in the community since 2004, and I've always concentrated especially on migrant farm workers. So our local farms around here are good friends of Vassinos, and we have a long history here in Macon County, in Jackson County in particular. This is our old mobile clinic, and these are our new mobile clinics. The old one is decommissioned, it's a 2005 Ford Econoline, so we got these big old fancy ones that we use now. So Vassinos is a nonprofit, like I mentioned, we incorporated in 2004, and until just these past couple of years, we've really always had a farmworker-only health focus. And the reason for that is really the particular health issues that farmworkers come against, including pesticide poisoning, exposure to the elements like sun, and heat illnesses, and et cetera. It really takes a specialized kind of medicine to cure her folks properly. About 34% of our patients reside in Macon County, so over a third of our patients reside here in Macon County, it's a big portion of where we spend a lot of our time. And almost all of them are farmworkers. In 2001, our board and staff and patients decided to, within our strategic planning process, open our patient eligibility. So I'll get to that in just a second. But we serve low-income, anybody that's low-income, which means under 200% of the federal poverty level, they don't have health insurance, or they have no reasonable access to health insurance. We do maintain special focus on farmworkers. And what we do is provide, I'm realizing how small that text is, I apologize, I'm happy to send this out afterwards, I mean, we provide integrated healthcare and mental healthcare to folks in need. All of our staff is bilingual, so that's our special focus while we work side by side with clinics like the Community Care Clinic of Franklin, Blue Ridge Health Services, Appalachian, the Community Care Clinic of Highlands. That's bilingual services, that cultural competence, cultural focus is really where our services specialize. All Vassinos services are free to a patient, to our patients as a free clinic, we don't charge for any of our services. And we also assist with co-pays as specialists. So we do everything that it takes to help a patient get the medical care that they need. As y'all know, there are not very many options for medical care in rural counties like Macon and Jackson, Graham, Wayne, out here out Far West. And so that's what Vassinos really does. If folks need interpretation at our specialist offices, we provide that interpretation. If they need transportation to our clinic or a specialist clinic, we provide that transportation, anything to break down the barriers to healthcare. So Vassinos runs on volunteer and staff medical providers. We have the two mobile clinics that you saw, and an outpatient clinic as well, which is hosted on Western's campus. We are a licensed pharmacy, we offer diagnostic lab services, and we also offer medication assistance enrollment, NC Medicine, and other places like that. We do farmworker outreach, and we also have started since COVID, in our clinical expansion, doing community health outreach. So community health team started as a COVID team, we administered over 4,000 COVID vaccines in 2021, and had over 8,500 COVID education and resource encounters in the past year as well, or in 2021. Now that team is working more on community health fairs. So if you keep an eye out for a mobile clinic, you'll probably see the community health team running around town. They look to be up here at Juanito's or the Mexican store up here, around in the specific neighborhoods as well, doing screening clinics, nutrition counseling, and it's just identifying community members in need. So why would we expand? Why are we expanding from farmworkers to the whole low-income uninsured population? And why are we maintaining our focus on Spanish speaking? The first and foremost is that in the past 20 years, we've seen almost a 400% increase in our Latinx population here in the six western counties. And I'm sure that those of y'all that have lived here for quite a while have noticed that. And you might have already, or you might have also noticed that there's not a lot of services that have followed that trend. Nationally, we're looking from moving from 19% nationally to about 28% nationally with Latinx population. And the trends for services are not following that, especially out here in rural western North Carolina. So you have folks coming to work on our farms, produce the food that we have every day. I know this morning I enjoyed strawberries with my daughter, who's two years old, and they were delicious. They're local. Who picked those? They're our farmworkers, the folks that we serve. We have about 4.6% of our households that speak a language other than English at home, which also makes having Spanish-speaking and culturally focused healthcare very important. About 3.1% of our total population is foreign-born. And those are all statistics from the U.S. Census Bureau, those are all for the six western counties. So, you know, take it with a grain of salt, the U.S. Census Bureau is not known for being the most accurate, especially when it comes to this population. So I would say those numbers are probably higher. But to really drive home the need for this is that the National Health Data Mapping System shows a really significant concentration of low-income and uninsured Latinx and limited English households in the Colley, Glenville, Teca CG zip code, which is where we currently have our clinic, and in the Franklin's zip code. So there's a lot of need in this area specifically. We also came to this conclusion based on all of this data, through our strategic planning process, our Patient Advisory Council, who we bring together at least twice every year to give us feedback on our services and what they need, and the Rural Immigrant Services Collective, which is a group here in western North Carolina, their need assessment survey. So I'm happy to go into any of that more. In order to put this patient expansion into reality, we are having to expand our physical space. We are currently housed on Western's campus, and we have two clinic nights for four hours a night, so it's really about eight hours clinical time, and we have about 750 patients every year. So we see around 750 patients every year with eight clinical hours and two mobile clinics. It's a lot of work. And if we want to expand more, we have to have more physical space. So the reason I'm here today is to tell y'all about the Community Health Hub. I'm sure a lot of y'all saw this old Smoky Mountains Systems building that was for sale down on the corner of Main Street and 441. But we bought that with the support of Dogwood Health Trust, and that is going to be the Community Health Hub. The Community Health Hub is the physical co-location of partner organizations that have services that our folks often look for together. So primary care and mental health care. They trust Vassinos because we help them with everything that they need, from interpretation to getting their insulin. So they'll confide in us about things that they might not confide in others about, such as domestic violence and sexual assault. To relive these traumas every time they go to a new place is self-traumatic. So if they come to a place like the Community Health Hub, they can relive it with Vassinos, and it's one and done. And we bring in our partners to help them get the services that they need. Blue Ridge Free Dental Clinic will open a practice with us down here at the Community Health Hub. The Centro Comunitario of Macon County will also have a physical space here. They do community building and cultural events. Physical legal services will offer ACA health enrollment, they'll offer tax preparation services, immigration services, and of course, Vassinos offering all of our services as well. And again, the Community Health Hub will be that fully bilingual staff, streamlined registration reception, a culturally focused approach to reducing trauma around healthcare and social determinants of health. In our first year, we will move from eight outpatient clinical hours in three exam rooms to basically unlimited hours in seven exam rooms. We'll move from 732 patients a year to 2,000 patients a year in the first year. We'll be able to expand from focusing only on farmworkers to focusing on any low-income uninsured adult in the region. I don't care where they come from, as long as they come to us, but we will focus on the six western counties. So partner services will be open to all, they don't have to be a Vassinos patient to seek domestic violence services or dental services, et cetera. So right now, like I mentioned, we've purchased the building, we've launched a capital campaign of $5.6 million. The renovations are wild, and if anybody has done anything or had their ears open, they know that everything's a little more expensive these days. So that wooden nail, those wooden pieces and nails have gone up a lot. We have about $350,000 secured with, we've just launched, so we've got several additional commitments coming in this month and next month as well. So our mortgage is currently with Dogwood Health Trust, and we're moving that mortgage to be inclusive renovations, we'll start renovations just as soon as we're able to do that. So the more that we can be successful in our capital campaign now, the more money in the long run we can put in programs and services when the Community Health Hub actually opens, so that our leases are going towards program support and not paying back a mortgage for having opened the building. And that's where y'all come in, and I'm happy to go into more information about any of this. I know y'all's time is limited, I want to be respectful of that, I appreciate y'all having me here today. So, you know, Vassinos needs y'all's support, especially as Franklin will become a more official home for us. Like I mentioned, we've been working in the community for about 20 years, and this will be our first time having an actual physical location here. So fundraising, leveraging community resources, challenging friends to donate, donating yourselves, investing, volunteering, your experience, your expertise, helping raise awareness and foster engagement, telling your friends, your civic groups, the Rotary Clubs, inviting us for presentations, and just letting people know what it is that we're doing, and helping, as the mayor so succinctly said, helping people, people helping people. So we have a couple of dinner series events coming up as a fundraising effort, and October 8th, we'll be at Gaia Herbs with Chef Luis Martinez over in Beauregard, and then we'll have an event here on December 10th, and then in Cashiers on February 11th. And so you can follow us on our Facebook page if you would like more information about that. And so I will stop there. I love this picture, this is some of our Franklin farmworkers out here, out towards, on the way to Georgia, on Georgia Road, and they say, when they tell you that a north is the north is beautiful, and we go out to dances or to take a walk on Sundays, take a look, this is our Sunday for us, the Northeners. So I love that, it's just a little way to show how hard the folks are working, that we support, and that put the food on our table every day. And thank you for having me, I don't know if anybody has any questions for me.
Any questions from the board? Do you work closely with our local health department folks too?
Yes, yeah, absolutely, absolutely. Yeah, we love that. Really, the work that we do cannot be done in a silo, which is why this co-location of the Community Health Hub is so important, especially during COVID, the health departments were locking key together.
Anyone else have a question?
Have you applied for community health funds? I know that at one time you had a Rural Health Initiative grant on the North End, but the federal grants, the community health, or the rural health, or migrant health grants?
Yes, we receive migrant health grants through, as pastor funds, through the Office of Rural Health. Yeah, so we have it.
As a federally qualified health center?
We are not a federally qualified health center, we are a free clinic. And so Blue Ridge Health and Appalachian are QHCs, and we are a free clinic. So there's some nuanced differences in there. Yeah, so we receive funds through the Office of Rural Health at state level.
Couple of questions. When do you think that the building will be operational?
That's a fabulous question. We're hoping for the spring of 2024, so a year and a half from now.
Okay, and I mean, is this a 24-hour thing? I know you mentioned domestic violence situations, where if somebody's in trouble, they can come there anytime?
So the domestic violence is victim's services, so it wouldn't be crisis intervention, right? And the building, as y'all are aware, I'm sure, is about one stoplight away from the new mission hospital, so it was pretty good location. No, we won't be offering urgent care or crisis intervention in that space.
Please, could you repeat again, when this is open, who will be eligible for services then?
So for Visino services, anybody that falls under 200% of the federal poverty level. So that's how we define low income. That's typically how free clinics define low income. And then anybody that doesn't have access to primary care or they have no health insurance. So for example, anybody that's uninsured. But when I say unreasonable access to health insurance, it might be our farm workers that live up in Little Canada in Jackson County. Well, they're working from 7:00 AM to 9:00 PM. Well, I don't know about y'all, but I've never been to the doctor after 9:00 PM unless it's been something I don't want to be there for. So that's unreasonable access. They have no reasonable access. So that way, they qualify for our services. We can still bring the mobile clinic and see them after 9:00 PM in their homes with the mobile clinic after hours. So the time and place that's convenient for them. So that's how our patient eligibility works, is just low income and uninsured.
Am I clear that also, you don't have to be Latino there?
No, 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 we don't. No, no, no. We focus on the bilingual services and work with our partners, like I mentioned, the community care clinics, especially because they're the local ones here. Blue Ridge, of course, and Silver, Appalachian and the other county. But no, of course not. Our services are open to everybody. And we always want everybody to find the best fit that's for them. And, you know, when you're searching for primary care provider, that's important, right? You need to be able to trust your primary care provider. It might be us, and it might be somebody else. And we're just here to make sure that everyone has access to primary care.
Thank you so very much. We wish you the most success and good luck as you move forward with this important project.
I appreciate it. I have plenty of other information. Happy to go into more details with anybody. Thank you.
We're very blessed to live in a region where we have good cooperation among municipalities and the counties in Region A. We've got a long history, a successful history of working together. One of the things that we all face this day and time is the lack of housing, affordable housing. And one of the reasons that some of our employers have trouble getting people to work here is because they have trouble finding a place to live. So that's an issue that we discussed back, I think, somewhat in our retreat last winter. And we're very fortunate tonight to have with us the Executive Director of the Region A Southwestern Commission, Mr. Russ Harris, who is going to give us some information on housing. And we thank him for taking the time to be with us and let us know, you know, what we can do about making housing more affordable for our folks here in Franklin.
Thank you, Mayor and Town Board. It's good to be here tonight. And, you know, I'll say upfront, there's no easy solutions on this. So I think it's the start of the conversation, and hopefully we can move forward a little bit just from starting to have this conversation. So again, I'm the Executive Director for the Southwestern Commission. Our mission is to improve the quality of life in the region. And we do that through the work of our three departments, which are Community and Economic Development, Workforce Development, and our Aging Department. And we kind of know that an issue has hit sort of a critical point when it starts to hit all three of those departments. And housing is one of those that absolutely hits our community and economic development, our workforce development, and our aging population right now. So first of all, you know, to look at any kind of problem, we look a little bit, you know, what are the numbers that are driving this problem? And so the chart that's up on the board right now shows the population for the region starting in 2010 projected out through 2050. And Macon County has seen a population increase from 2010 to 2020 of about 12%. Franklin was closer to 7%. We also saw after the Great Recession, we saw people getting out of the trades and not coming back. So we had higher demand for housing with people moving in. We have less supply, you know, we have less people doing trades. I think, you know, we can get into a housing conversation, it can start getting a little depressing over time. I will say that the positive side of this coin is we are adding population. If we're on the other side of that coin, it's a much different conversation than we're having tonight, and that's a much more depressing conversation. It's hard to pay for your infrastructure and everything else once you start to lose population. So we are blessed to be adding population. This chart, this map that's up here, it's done by the Rural Center. It's a little bit dated. It's 2000 to 2010. But what we know anecdotally and kind of what took place during COVID, we feel like this is a trend that's continuing. And so all the counties that are in green are adding population for ages 30 to 39. The ones in red are losing population in ages 30 to 39. So when we look at rural communities in the state, you know, there aren't a lot that are adding population within this demographic, but we are. This is the kind of place a lot of folks are coming back to or want to come back to, to raise their families. But if we don't have housing, there's only so far that trend can take us. So a little bit on the, just defining what we're talking about. We're talking about affordable housing. So affordable housing is when somebody spends less than 30% of their income on their housing plus their utilities. And so if you spend more than 30%, you're considered cost burden by definition. And in Macon County, about one out of every five people are cost burdened right now when it comes to their housing situation. This chart shows you who needs access to affordable housing in your community. And, you know, I've been guilty of saying it before, like, you know, and then, you know, as you get educated, you learn the power of your language and what you should and shouldn't say. But, you know, we don't need affordable housing. We need workforce housing, right? You hear that a lot. It's an easy thing to say. But if you look at this graphic, the area meeting income for Macon County is $7,500. If you make 80% or less of that, then you're eligible for some kind of affordable housing assistance, which means anybody making under $46,000 in Macon County right now falls within that category. So when we talk about who that is, you can see the occupations. Those are the people providing services within our community. That's our police officers, our teachers, our fire department, our retail, you know, people working in restaurants. All these folks are falling below that line right now. So a little bit about the numbers and what the need is in Macon County. So, and again, a lot of this is Macon County because it's easier to get numbers at a county level than it is at a town level. But you can take that and understand what it means at the town level as well. And some of this does break out the town. So in 2019, we worked with counties in the west to do housing studies for all those counties, see if we could put numbers to them. And the first thing to address an issue is figure out what are the numbers and what can, you know, is this really a problem? Or is it just something we're talking about and kind of creates its own echo? So from that study, you can see the numbers of what the Macon County market was considering looking at demographics that it could support from the years 2020 to 2025. A little bit on language in this graphic. When we talk about subsidized rental units, subsidized usually means some kind of intervention on the demand side. So that's something that's going to a tenant to help them pay their bills monthly. When we talk about affordable housing, that's more of an intervention that's going on the, on the demand side. Subsidized is on the demand side. So that's going to a tenant, and then affordable housing is going on the supply side. So that's a developer that may want to come in. They're going to go for return on investment. So unless there's some kind of intervention to help them make ends meet, they're not going to put that housing into affordable, that resource into affordable housing. So this shows a little bit of what this county and specifically this town could support in terms of rental units for seniors, affordable rental units, market rate, subsidized, the whole kind of gamut of housing. Dogwood Health Trust recently did a study called the Bowen Study, which goes a little deeper into this. So this study can be found on our website. And then if you look up, if you email me, I can get it for you. Or if you look up the Development Health Trust, you should go to the Bowen Study, which goes a little more in-depth. So housing solutions, you know, there's two ways to go at this. One is kind of on the planning side, and I'm not going to go a whole lot into that tonight. And then the other one's on the funding, the funding side. So on planning, if we talk about solutions, it's looking at things like reducing required lot sizes, allowing auxiliary dwellings on property, things that are going to end up, you know, taking advantage of where you already have infrastructure in the town to increase your density. So you don't continue to build out and sprawl out into the mountains necessarily. From a cost efficiency standpoint, you know, you don't want to keep running, and we really don't have the option with annexation in North Carolina right now anyway, but you don't want to keep running water sewer, you know, just to keep expanding out. But you want, you've already got resources here. So return on the investment for the town is to encourage that housing where you've got that. Then there's a couple of slides that I'm going to go through. Just kind of talk about some of the common arguments against infill, some of the myths that are out there about infill development, and then sort of the reality of what that looks like. So on the funding side, there's a couple of different resources that are out there. One of the biggest is the Low Income Housing Tax Credit. This is a federal program that goes through the state. Developers can apply for tax credits, and then they can sell those tax credits and use that money to end up, you know, making one of these housing projects cash flow. Again, without some kind of subsidy or some kind of intervention going to developers, this is just not where they're going to put their resources. You know, we can't go to them and say, hey, it'd be nice if you would charge 60% of what you could be charging because that would help people out. These folks are in business. They want to make money. So there needs to be some kind of incentive for them to do that. And this is the biggest one nationally. $8 billion a year go into this. This is something we've seen some of in our region, although it's a little bit difficult. And you look at some of the criteria here. First one up there, they're looking for sites that are at least five acres. Let's start thinking about the town of Franklin. How many five-acre sites do you have right now that are available? They prefer to find one with one owner. They don't want to be negotiating with 10 different people to get that five acres. And now think again, right, how many properties do we know that meet the criteria? It needs an owner that's willing to give them an option on the property because they're going to have to apply for low-income housing tax credits. It's going to take like eight months to figure out whether or not to get them. So somebody, you know, that's willing to take a little bit of money to hold that property off the market for them, needs to be there. They've got to do a market study to make sure that they're not putting something in the community that's not needed. And so most of the time in our region, when we do market studies, we come back with things that will support about 45-unit projects, which is a pretty small project by low-income housing tax credit standards, which makes it harder for them to cash flow the project. The next slide shows you kind of a scoring for those projects. So as if the last one didn't make it daunting enough, fine. But if you don't score perfect on that top set where it's got grocery, shopping, and pharmacy, and you need to be within two miles of all those things, then you're not going to score well enough to get funded. It's a really competitive program. So, you know, I know like when we're in Graham County and somebody calls up and says, hey, I got a piece of property that might be good for a housing project. And we just say, well, how far are you from Ingles? Because they have one grocery store in that community. And if they're not within two miles, conversation's over. So if you look at the top criteria, you've got to be perfect on that. The bottom one, you've got a little more flexibility. But again, you can start to think about how to Franklin and properties available and then how difficult it is to make that work. This is an example of a project of what a low-income housing tax credit project would look like. And the one thing, we have two stigmas that we kind of, when we're dealing with affordable housing. Number one, people, you know, think that they're people that aren't working. And as we demonstrated earlier, they are working. There are people in our community that provide services. The other one is, oh, it'll be some rundown. It won't look good. The federal government is taking steps to alleviate that, and they definitely have standards. They've got to send in their design standards, and it's got to meet a certain criteria. The other thing is, is properties don't just land in your community and then, you know, good luck with that. Like, they have to manage that property. And if there's a problem with that property, they're responsible for addressing. Couple other options before we get in. I'm just talking about, you know, funding tools that you may have as a community. You know, one is, you know, what can you do? And then, you know, what can you do to incentivize somebody doing a project like this? One would be if you had property as a town that you wanted to put towards that. And so you may be able to donate that or give that at a reduced cost. I will say, you know, when we talk about giving things to developers, it's got to be, if you're doing it for housing, it's got to be for affordable housing. Like, you can't say, we'd like market rate housing, we're going to give that person property. Well, they're already making money on that. You can't give them tax-paid dollars to make more money on that. So, but for affordable housing, you could, if you had land that you wanted to donate, you could donate or you could give it to them at a reduced price. You can help them with water and sewer at a reduced price and provide that. You can form a housing trust fund, which would be money that you would have at the community level then to, you know, put into grants, either to renters. You know, you could do down payment assistance for first-time home buyers. Or you could, you know, use it to incentivize a nonprofit developer yourself. Community land trust, where the town owns land. And then the person may come in, they own the house on the land, but you're kind of taking the land out of the equation. It never goes out of community ownership. So the person that lives in the house, you know, doesn't have to pay for that land cost. It's a little more affordable for them. But they also have the opportunity to sell the house at some point and do a little bit of wealth building themselves, which is to go off on ownership. But you aren't taking the land out of the equation at that point. And I will say, you know, a couple of partners that you've got that we didn't have in the past, but we look at, you know, Dogwood Health Trust is absolutely involved in the housing issue. And then Nana Hail Health Trust is another one that's pretty involved in this, and those are pretty big issues. So as you're starting to have conversations and you have ideas for what you want to do, it's worth having conversations with those little donations. At the Southwestern Commission, a couple of years ago, we started looking for things we could do to impact this issue. So we started working with all the towns in the west, the counties in the west, and we formed the Southwestern NC Home Consortium. This gives us access to high-end home funds, which typically go to urban areas unless you can give rural areas to decide to bond together and form a consortium, which is fairly unusual. But in our region, six out of our seven counties and the towns within those counties joined the consortium about two years ago. Seventh county is Cherokee County, and they'll come online next year, which will give us a little more funding. So these funds can go to new construction, they can go to property acquisition, rental and down payment assistance, or homeowner rehab. And so we've got right now the allocation is about $542,000 a year. Next year, when Cherokee County comes up, it'll be about $660,000 a year. And it's not a huge amount of money. But we just got the first round of projects approved this morning. And a lot of this is like, you know, there was a project in Haywood County that was $300,000. But if that was able to get a project across the finish line, it's probably going to be about a $15 million project. So there's good leverage to, you know, it's gap funding for hopefully bigger projects. And, you know, as I said, we just got through the first round this morning. Got that approved, and we're excited to have that funding. We've also got almost $2 million to alleviate homelessness in the region. That money's not online yet. We've got a little bit of planning to figure out the best way to spend it. Home Consortium has a governing board made up of representatives from all the towns and counties that are members. And right now, it looks like we're going to do one funding cycle a year, and we'll do that, open that up in the spring, and then we award late summer, early fall. So that's the super-fast, 30,000-foot view of solving your housing problem. But like I said, it starts.
A lot of digest there, Russ.
It starts a conversation, hopefully.
It's one of those things, it's kind of hard to get your arms around it because everybody knows it's an issue out there. Nobody really has a foolproof solution to address it. We're trying to figure out what can we do as a town board to help alleviate this problem. And there's been programs over the years, and I know you're familiar with them, Macon Program, they've had some housing programs, and they still do to a large extent. Even at one time, it was a very popular program called Self-Health Housing Program, where young people actually build their own house.
USBAM.
That was very successful for a long time. But there's a real demand, and it's continued to grow. And so it's something that we were concerned about for our folks here and the people who want to live here. Do the board members have any questions that you'd like to ask Russ to share with us about?
I'll make a comment if I might. It's going to be tough to have just a silver bullet that's going to house everybody and make everything affordable. But what we can do is a lot of little tiny steps. Like, we talked about the zoning issue. And the complaint that was frowned around with this was an infill. I mean, there are certain regulations and rules that we've imposed as a governing body that, you know, hurts the affordability of housing in some of our neighborhoods. We can allow them to be more densely populated and get some actual prices down. And that's just one step that we have the ability to do. And it's going to take a lot of little tiny steps in the right direction to help alleviate it, not just one big huge whirlwind, problem solved. It's thinking and constantly looking at, are we doing something, you know, non-intentionally that's, you know, making housing less affordable? And can we alleviate that somehow through our jurisdictional responsibilities?
Yeah, I think that's absolutely right. And I, you know, I don't know the answer. I do think continuing to do what we've all done across the west is not going to fix this problem. We're not going to fix it on one-acre lots at this point, you know, to be ready to need. So, and I'm sitting here thinking to myself, all right, well, you know, you asked me what you should do. I don't have an answer to the question. But I was thinking, I don't know that any county or town in the west has a plan for where they're going to house. You know, you're talking about a lot of different pieces. You know, I think just nobody wants to stand by, wants to act, nobody wants to plan. But I think sitting back and having a strategy for all these small pieces that they've mentioned. You know, it's a lot of different tools you have exposed when you move it forward. And so it may be taking a breath and get somebody to help come in because it's a complicated issue.
I know this is an issue Stacy has a lot of concern about. We've talked about it on a page or two. Do you have any comments or observations or questions?
I'll just say, I know there's people personally who are hardworking people, who are living in their vehicles. I've talked to a lot of them. I talked to a lady, as we, we was looking for a place to live, and it's at the institution or the facility that she works at, they've actually opened a patient room for her to live in as a nurse, because she can't find a place to rent. So I think part of it is affordability for people who want to own their home, but the other part is the scarcity of, of places, and not just affordable. I know some people who make really good money, you can't find a place to, to rent. So I think we have to talk about it, and I think we have to look for ways to address it, and I think it's a good idea to have a specific plan for how we're going to address housing in Franklin.
Yeah, I, you know, we hear stories of, you know, in the past, you could do rental vouchers. Now folks, you know, they could go to a landlord and say, I've got this voucher, and there's hundreds of people walking the streets of vouchers, right? And there's nowhere to, no available stock, spend those off, and if you're a landlord, you've got the outcome voucher, or somebody, you know, paying by check, you know.
There's a lot to cover in just a short presentation, and I appreciate you doing that. Perhaps it would be worth considering to have some kind of a workshop, regional workshop for those who are rent residents pursuing these different programs and so forth, so that you can have some tools in your bag, and you say, well, here's what we can do in Franklin, or here's what we can do in Wayne'sville or Silver, or wherever it might be. At some point in time, it may be helpful if the region could put together some kind of a workshop, so that we would spend a little bit more time talking about what programs are available, how can we get into what's going to be required on our part, and how can we make this happen in our community? So if we could do something like that, I think that would, would give us, give us a good starting point.
No, absolutely, it's a great idea. Rita.
Well, I, I think on the other, other part of that would be some way to convene builders or developers who, I mean, they've got plenty of, right, have plenty of work, but there's also this, you know, this undercushion that would be very helpful if they knew more about it. And if we could say, well, you know, the town of Franklin will help you with that. We can do some of this legwork with you or for you, so that, so that we get some people that are interested. I just, we're getting, like David said, there's going to have to be a lot of initiative and perseverance and creative doings.
And, and, you know, if you know of properties you think may work, don't hesitate, just shoot me, shoot me the address. We, you know, that was something that was going on out in Cherokee County for a while, and the mayor got involved out there, and he knew a real estate agent kind of knew those properties before they go up for sale. And so we started sending those to a nonprofit developer, and now they've got a project that's going on out there. So I mean, taking that, they work out of that for the developer, you know, they're looking all over the west for property, that can take a lot of time and a lot of money. So if, if there's a way to take that out of the equation for them, even something like that helps out a lot.
And I would add, knowing where our infrastructure is capable of, of handling this, water and sewer, and accessibility to water and sewer lines. I mean, we've had developers in the past that have come to us and for whatever reason we didn't have access to sewer lines, we can solve these problems in-house and have properties that are ready for development by getting some guard ducks in the road, building sewer line access roads that are necessary.
Absolutely. What else? Thank you, Russ.
Thank you all.
I guess it brings us to item number six, an option of our agenda for tonight's meeting. There is, uh, nothing?
I have a motion to postpone item 10C, which is the memorandum of understanding for the sculpture to adopt. And I'd also like to ask if we could, I know that it's all business, if there's some way to move that towards the front agenda, there'll be, I think there'll be a lot of people here for that.
So are you making a motion to approve the agenda with the exception of item 10C and to postpone that item until the yacht program meeting?
Yes, sir.
That's your motion. Is there a second?
Thank you.
Thank you. Any discussion? Here are none, all those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. Opposed, alike sign, then motion carries. Agenda has been adopted. Now we have the consent agenda. Are there any items on the consent agenda that any board member would like to pull off and discuss separately, or is there a motion to approve the consent agenda as prepared by our manager?
So I'm going to accept the consent agenda.
Motion motion line to approve the consent agenda, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, there's a second. Any discussion? Here are none, all those in favor, motion please signify by raising your hand. Opposed, alike sign, motion carries. Consent agenda is approved. Now we enter our public session. We have some folks signed up to speak during public session, and we will thank those who are aware that they've signed up. We have two people signed up to speak tonight, and the first one is Mr. Dave Lynn.
Evening council, it's fun, nice to do it. Yeah, thank you, a big thank you this year. Our eighties flashback was our biggest ever. We had, we raised over twenty thousand dollars for the hospital, Shriners Hospital, and we've helped out one hundred and fifteen kids now in Macon County. So with y'all's support, we had amazing turnout. Next year, the Shriners are actually coming from all around the country, all around the state to do installments. We're going to have an official Shriners parade in August of next year, so it won't be just the eighties flashback, it'll be also a Shriners parade too. So it was just amazing, I want to share a quick video with y'all about the weekend, if you don't mind, a little quick minute, and, uh, okay, okay. I guess, what is wrong? I did, I did, so real quick, I bet like I said, it was the best ever, so here it is. There it was. But it was a great weekend, we had, each event had over twelve hundred people in each event, so. I'm going to, I'm going to, oh, you played over. Maybe. There you go. Thank you. Well, I wanted, I wanted to share real quick with y'all, and thank y'all so much. It was the best ever. Thank you again for it. Joe, thank you. Next year, Joe will be on stage, hopefully with us. But no, overall, like I said, we helped out, we're helping out one hundred and fifteen kids. We actually, the young man that up in Highlands, we, last week, we took him up to Cincinnati, Ohio, so he's out with the Shriners Hospital in Cincinnati, Ohio, so we get services there. But also too, we have, like I said, last week, daughter Foley has another child too, so because of this event, a lot more parents are now realizing that the Shriners are helping, are here for the love. So I just wanted to share with y'all the love too, and to tell y'all, thank you again. Over twenty thousand dollars was raised, and money is still coming, we're still counting. We, we don't know the total, we're supposed to have it by the twenty fourth when we present the check to the Greenville Chartered School. But I just wanted to tell y'all, thank you so much for everything y'all do, and thank you for your support, and hopefully next year, you will support us again for the eighties flash hour weekend, always the first week of August.
Thank you, Dave. Thank you. Our next speaker is George Malouer.
Evening council. I represent the pickleball group in Franklin, and I want to ask a couple of questions about pickleball and the Whitmire property. Let me just say quickly for the, for people who don't, don't know that much about pickleball, it's really exploded in the last twenty years. Right now, there are about five million people in the country playing. The pickleball population has doubled since two thousand and fourteen, and in Franklin, it's really exploded. We have about a hundred and seventy people on the list, and for the last few years, we've been playing on four courts that we share with field hockey and basketball, which means there are portable nets that are stored in a warehouse or shed, maintenance shed, which means that people can only play during work hours when the maintenance people are in the maintenance. What this means is that young folks and working people really can't play pickleball in the evening or on the weekends. So what we have been trying to lobby for, revenue can be raised from pickleball tournaments. Recently, our, our group had a, I guess a third or fourth charity tournament for the Humane Society, we raised a little over fourteen hundred dollars, had about fifty people from various counties in North Carolina, but also from Georgia and from South Carolina, and we only had four courts to play on, so it was a real problem to fit all those games into a three day period. So what we're trying to do, and this is the good news to you, we're not here asking for money, we're really asking for maybe space. The county approved recently a hundred and fifty thousand dollars for the pickleball courts, which is great, and we're trying to figure out where would be the best place to put them. There's one option that the county has, it's, it's pretty good, but what I'm asking about tonight is the Whitmire property. I know there was some talk about it, they're possibly making it usable for recreation. And if that's the case, I guess my questions are really specific. Is pickleball on the table for Whitmire property? And if it is, can something be accomplished fairly quickly? Because our money has to be spent this fiscal year, this county money. So those are the questions that I have. If we could possibly have pickleball courts on the Whitmire property, and if it could be accomplished.
I'm not sure we can give you a, a concrete answer, but that's certainly one of the uses that would be compatible with recreation part of that Whitmire property. The board had a meeting last week to discuss possible uses of that, and the board decided to designate a good portion of that property for recreation, and we're in process now to put together a recreation plan for that, also to look at some other types of things up there, perhaps something along the lines of entertainment, or even possibly some of the property, not suitable for recreation, might be used for housing. And so we're still working on that, but I think the pickleball thing, it really, it really gets big, thirty years ago, it would shuffleboard. Remember that? Was that seventy years ago? And now, most people I've talked to of my age, or not even as old as I am, they, they're asking me to go play pickleball with them. I've never had a chance, I did buy a racket.
I never heard that.
I just haven't had a chance to get it out yet, but I think that's, that could be a possibility, and I'm sure when we put our, our, our recreation plan together, then that might be, that might be part of it, but I, we don't have a plan right now, we're just in the beginning stages. We just met, and decided to, board decided to do that last Tuesday, and so we really ain't had a chance to put it all together yet, and we're working on that. And I think you, along with several other people in the community, have expressed a need for that. We've also had some conversations, and it was with some of the county folks who are willing to work with us, and we're certainly willing to work with them, that we can do something together to benefit everybody. So we're optimistic.
Okay, that sounds great. Thanks a lot for your consideration.
Thank you. We have no one else signed up for public session? Anyone who came in and didn't get a chance to sign up?
That's me.
Please come forward, give us your name.
My name is Beverly Butcher. Fifty-four Rose Hill Drive. So it's Beverly Butcher.
I'm sorry, we, we want to get your, did you get her name? Okay, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Thank you so much for taking the time to speak, Councilwoman, Mayor Holden. Nice to see you again, Rita. So my name is Beverly Butcher, and I'm a member of the Western North Carolina Citizens Lobby Climate Lobby, an international bipartisan rest with advocacy organization that works to bring both sides of the aisle together to work on climate solutions. As you are all aware, HR five-three, the Inflation Reduction Act, does not, falls short of its goal to reach reductions of fifty percent by twenty thirty at the twenty, um, let me see, the two thousand, what was it? Two thousand and five level? I'm sorry, my allergies are really bad today, so it's a, a bit of a struggle. So, um, so anyway, we, you know, President Biden's administration has spawned short of laying out for us what we need to do to reduce climate emissions, right? So we need to, we insist the climate lobby are encouraging everyone to do what they can to reduce greenhouse emissions. According to USA Today, the article of August tenth, two thousand and twenty-one, there are more than six hundred towns and cities throughout the United States which have climate action plants, climate action plants, and most succinctly, they are defined as a detailed and strategic framework for measuring, planning, and reducing greenhouse gas emissions and related, related climatic impacts. That's directly quoted from the Vermont Climate Action Plan, December two thousand and twenty-one. So eleven of those climate action plans have been created by towns and cities in North Carolina, and Nashville is the most recent one. The others are Chapel Hill, Carrow, Pittsburgh, Durham, Durham County, Hillsborough, Raleigh, Winstonstown, Charlotte, and Nattes. So we, at the Citizens Climate Lobby, are very pleased and grateful to see that you installed the electric charging stations between, behind Camp Hall, and we respectfully inquire tonight as to whether or not you have any further plans to mitigate climate and therefore make an important contribution to the state of the state, the country, and the world. As we know today, in California, the temperatures are a hundred and seventeen degrees. I don't think I have to elaborate further on the tragedies that are happening all over the world. More than eleven hundred people dying in Pakistan, the homeless dying in Phoenix and everywhere else. I mean, every day, it's floods, it's droughts, it's tycoons, it's hurricanes, rising sea levels, when is it going to be else? So I would just like to call everyone's attention to this matter, not that it needs, you know, attention. And many of you don't like Bill Gates, I gather, but he did say in his book How to Avoid a Climate Disaster, there were so many warnings about the pandemic by scientists for years and years, nobody paid any attention, nobody believed it, nobody acted, and the same thing is happening now, unless we act further than the Inflation Reduction Act, which hopefully will inspire other countries to lead as we have done to lead again. So thank you for your attention, I'm sorry my allergies are interfering with my communication skills tonight, I spent, and I had the mask on, that didn't help, I did feel like I was getting a little dizzy, so.
Thank you, thank you.
Okay.
Is there anyone else that we missed who wanted to speak in public session? Thank you.
And I would like to thank Rita for taking the time to meet with me privately about this matter, I could communicate through email to three of the members.
If you were going to take the managers' office, we'll be glad, if so, we'll be glad to sit down and talk to you.
Okay, yeah, I have it forgotten, I'm, I've been working hard on a letter to all of you, as a matter of fact. It turned into a research paper instead. It turned into a research paper instead.
Have a procedure of question. Is it, would it be appropriate during this meeting to direct staff to have conversations with the county about possibility of pickleball courts up at Whitmire?
I don't see any reason, I think we've had some informal discussions about it already. I haven't had any formal, we're hoping to be talking to county folks for soon, but in the meantime, I'm sure our manager will be talking to her counterparts on the county level and also in the Highlands area. And we'll talk a little about the working together with this one. I think that's the direction we need to work towards. You know, for a long time, the county was the only recreation, except for what little bit of town did, I think, with inspiration from our friends, Mr. Polk, and others, that want to see more recreational opportunities for our folks here, that would be a top of the priority, so. And we'd like to do it with the county, as the county's well and work with us. If not, we'll do what we can do on our own. Thank you. We do have a request from the Franklin Tourism Development Authority tonight. I want to make a note that the T D A, Tourism Development Authority, the money is generated through room taxes and so forth that go back to promote travel and tourism, and that money goes directly to the T D A. And all the money that they have, they spend comes from what they collect or what's in their fund balance. And the town budget is part of our budget, the town budget includes the budget for the T D A, and so if there's any change in their budget, it's required that they come back to the town and get permission to make any changes. For example, the request, I think, is to use some of the fund balance to do some more expanded promotions and development for things for next year. And so Josh Drake is here, Representative T D A, and I'll let him explain what they'd like to do and why.
So we requested a hundred and forty thousand dollars for a budget this year, which is the same request as last year. However, last year, we, the funds that came in were a hundred and seventy-five, actually a hundred and seventy-six thousand dollars. So of that money, first of all, we expect to pull in a hundred and seventy, five hundred and seventy-six thousand dollars this year, as well as we didn't spend eighty-six thousand dollars last year, we also had some funds reserved. So we would like to ask for an additional hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars on top of a hundred and forty thousand dollars, which will move that to two hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars for our budget this year. I was asked to come because it's the biggest request we've ever had, but because we didn't spend part of the money last year, I'm just here to answer a question.
What would be the biggest expense that you would need to spend the money on for this coming year?
So we would, the percentage-wise, I've got some numbers here. We do a couple of different things. We do marketing, outside marketing, we have some money for festivals, so festivals, all the festivals you see here are funded partially by us, partly by, partially by the county tourism development, as well as other funds that are brought in. We like to, you know, give some funds, help people start some festivals, in order to bring people to town. Our job is tourism, develop tourism, put heads in beds in the hotels, et cetera. So, and then, you know, we have a couple other things. Part of what we want to do this year is revamp the website. That's only going to be about ten thousand dollars or so. But since we have the extra funds, we decided that we should spend them instead of just letting them sit there.
Josh, y'all still doing the mailboards down in Carolina, or?
So I don't, I don't have, no. I don't remember exactly where I'm at right here. But we're not in the northern parts of Atlanta. We've done a couple different things, and a lot of what we do is trackable, and I can provide that information for you. I have everything that I need to answer civic questions, but we've done some advertising with U S A Today, we've done some advertising, and we do, we also do some cross-advertising, but we've tried to move to a lot more trackable stuff, as opposed to boards, which are hard to track those.
Yeah. I guess U S A Today's just regionally targeted.
Yeah, and so you can go, you can pick a city. So I think at times we've done Raleigh, we've done some areas in Florida, we've done Atlanta, and we try to pick areas where we already have some people coming, try to boost those numbers.
Analytics are still something y'all are.
Yep. And again, we're happy to provide those, if you'd like to see them, we look at them and go over them on a regular basis. I didn't bring any tonight, but.
T D A is the town, T D C is the county, right?
Correct.
Okay, and there's some sort of metrics that you have to spend a certain amount of money on advertising, is that right?
So the, I'm just trying to recall, I think the exact phrase in the session law that created, authorized the T D A that the board has is that two-thirds must be spent on advertising for events that are designed to increase tourism in the area, in the town specifically. I mean, that's been a, well, up to one-third.
Not completely black and white, though, but it's somewhat black and white.
Yeah, I think, right, I think up to one-third is eligible to be spent on infrastructure that, again, is to support tourism, but that's a little less defined, and again, that's sort of the main, but, you know, they're supposed to spend that, these two-thirds, and I think the budget is basically always spent on all advertising. I don't think any infrastructure projects are going to work.
You walked me into my next question perfectly. Put my recreation hat on again. I read that the Haywood T D A recently spent eighty-seven thousand for a Greenway project, and the Haywood T D A spent a hundred and fifty thousand towards a bike park in Haywood County. I mean, those, I don't think are considered usual tourism things in the, in the history of tourism, but I think that is very applicable to what tourists are coming to Western North Carolina for nowadays. And are y'all thinking about doing anything, like infrastructure-wise, or you still want to focus on advertising, or is that a conversation that is open to be had?
You know, I'm happy to discuss anything, anything that brings people to town. Our overall budget is, is, again, a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars. We have extra leftover from last year and a little bit in a reserve, so we don't have a huge budget to do a whole lot. I don't know how, how far our little budget will go. County tourism has a much larger budget than we do.
Having worked with the T D A for years, I would say they entertain a proposal, but I also agree that a third of, you know, of that amount of money is not going to get you real good.
See, is the, is the county T D C hamstrung by the same parameters, two-thirds or one-third, or?
I have to look at the, it's commonly done by these individual session laws that went sort of location by location and said, you may do it here, and I think the county, they're all fairly similar, but they have little piddles in the details and they all have little bitty differences. I have to look at what the county has.
Some of them are very vague, some of them are very specific, but like the attorney says, when this, when approved for a local government to adopt this, set up this program there, then they have to write specific legislation for that, and they're a little different. Some of them are as broad as to be used for anything that promotes travel and tourism, and some of them say it would be used so much to provide such and such for our civic center to do this, that, and the other. So it depends on the jurisdiction. You'd have to look at our legislation to see what restrictions are on it. It's probably a little bit different than the county's.
Well, I guess what I'm telling you guys, I don't quite understand the whole thing, I'm just going for a proper understanding, but I mean, anybody, I guess, can go to your board and just say, hey, we got a good idea, and if it.
An application process, but yeah.
Okay, if it shows results, or if you think it's going to show results of beds and heads and increase more occupancy tax, then it can be a go.
Yep.
Okay. I have a few questions.
Okay.
You hit on the block, so the, the budget, whatever you don't use involves over year after year.
Yes.
The other, speaking about projects and partnerships, is, is T D A a potential partner for our Fourth of July festival, the fireworks display?
I'm sure that that would fall under that category.
But do, I mean, do we traditionally get resources from T D A for the, for this last year, do we get resources for the?
We have not, it's always been the town's, for the fireworks the past two years.
And like things like what Dave was talking about earlier, that's the kind of thing we support, the eighties flashback?
Yeah. Well, and so a lot of what we do for these festivals is give them money to advertise for themselves. But we're not trying to fund the whole festival.
Right.
We try to stick to giving them money to use for advertising dollars, which falls under the marketing of the town to bring in tourists. So in addition, we try to spend a little bit less money each year with each festival so that they become self-sufficient, and then we can use that money to start more festivals or, or different areas in marketing.
So what's in our current budget for T D A?
Their current budget's a hundred and forty thousand, and the request is to increase it to two hundred and sixty-five, so that we can do some more of the videos and photography and things that are necessary to upgrade the website to continue to promote.
Would that not be more suitable for our next budget cycle? Or is it requests you to jump in midstream now and just, what, for my general fund or whatever?
No, we turn the T D A's fund back.
This is a separate, we have a separate fund. So this, this money will either be there for us this year, or next year, or later years. So we're asking to spend it now, because that's what we're required to do, as opposed to save it and spend it later.
I think it's in the session law too, that the T, our T D A is required to be managed by our town finance officer and be a part of the budget, but the funds all come from a collection, isn't it? That's the only, the only place they come from, the only thing that can be spent on is the things that are authorized. So, yeah, it's, and I, I've always, you know, people say, well, you're raising taxes to do these T D A things, and that's not, not on anybody who lives here, it's on people who come to us. And everywhere you all go, you pay that every time you rent a room anywhere else, so.
When you talk about the website, are you talking about the town of Franklin's website?
No, we have our separate, own separate website.
Why would we not, I mean, I think that town of Franklin website gets a number of hits, I mean, that seems like something.
There's links to the T D A's website, to the Discover Franklin website.
See, and so you could have them through the same website, but your website's more for town residents, ours is more for promoting, you know, people who are trying to get to come into town to visit. So it's two separate.
AIs.
Yeah.
But the board approves the request for the transfer of fund balance to the regular operating budget, do we still have some fund balance left?
Yes, we still have a reason.
Do you know how much?
Probably seventy-five thousand.
Don't do any good tonight, does.
No, sir.
Give, give the money once. Don't ask for no more.[1383.16][1383.16](laughter) I'll make that motion.
We have a motion for Mr. Collins to approve the request from the T D A to transfer a hundred and twenty-five thousand from their fund balance to their operating budget for this fiscal year, which goes through June thirtieth. Is that the, is that the?
I thought it was one-twenty, is he bumped it up to one-twenty-five?[1405.32][1405.32](laughter)
The piece of paper I got when I walked in said one-twenty-five.
Okay, that's it.
All right, is there a second to the motion? Mr. Guffey, second motion, discussion.
Yeah, I support it, I think y'all do a good job. I, I'd like to see some focus on infrastructure that also helps tourism and people who live here, because we're, we're struggling by, with that, is, is helping our own residents, and if you guys can help do something that helps residents and tourists alike, I think that's a win for everybody.
Josh, you guys will come back to us sometime later on this year before the end of this fiscal year, and tell us what you got for your investment, hopefully some numbers on how tourism may have increased because of your emphasis on, your emphasis on more promotion and so forth.
We'll be glad to do that.
Any other questions? If not, all those who voted motion, please stick a hand, raise your hand, if you opposed by like sign, congratulations.
Thank, thank you very much. Go all right night.
Mr. Saxon, we have a request to change the speed limit on Second River View Heights Street. Could you bring the board up to date on that?
Yes, Mayor Town Council, about a couple weeks ago, we got a request from one of the property owners, Miss Susan Nichols, who's Nicholson, who is right behind me, to have their street that she lives on, the current speed limit is twenty-five miles an hour, and they're requesting to have it lowered to fifteen miles an hour. You should, in your packet, you should see that application with, I believe it was six property owners that signed on to it. And this is a section, it's from the, the section they're asking to have lowered, you should just have a map in there as well attached, it's from Woodland Heights Road to the, on River View Heights to the end, Woodland Hills. Woodland Hills. Yeah, Woodland Hills on River View Heights, the intersection there to the end, that dead end section of River View Heights, is what they're requesting have lowered to twenty-five, fifteen.
You say, well, the, the soccer, how many houses are in there on this street?
Six.
There's six houses.
All six signed off on someone?
They were looking, they were looking at the whole.
All, all but one signed on. The other one is one right at the beginning. And I believe the, the one that did sign on is one of the ones that's been having issues.
Fair enough. The problem is, if the speed limit's twenty-five, people go thirty to thirty-five, if the speed limit's thirteen or fifteen, they're still going to go twenty to twenty-five, and just get somewhere.
But that gives us some, a little more leeway with the police to be able to monitor it.
I, I.
Because currently, when they come up the hill from River View Heights, they have to really gun it because it's a steep hill. Well, at the very top of the hill is where the Woodland Hills Drive intersects with River View Heights. So if they miss the turn, they're, you know, flying, and come on out that street, even though there's a dead end sign right there. We're having, we have trouble with delivery vehicles, with regular traffic, with local traffic, and currently, those of us that have been, I've been up there forty-five years, and in the past five years, we've had more problems with speeding vehicles. Myself, Fred included, we've got children now that we didn't, we didn't have for a while, and unfortunately, the, the street, when River, River View Heights, there, that intersection goes from a very small two-lane to an even smaller one-lane on that end of the street, there's no place to walk. We all have to back out into the street from our houses, and it's becoming a safety issue. Yes, sir.
You know, philosophically, I agree with this, but we're such a small police department, there's rarely ever going to be any enforcement of this rotten tickets up on a dead-end street, I just can't imagine that being that high of a priority. Would any speed bumps in this city street, like, would that be something that would actually have more effect on, on reducing the speed, or is that something we could even entertain doing? Is that, that set a terrible precedent?
Maybe not spaping them off everywhere, though.
Maybe so, but I just can't imagine, I mean, yes, twenty-five to fifteen, but who's up there to enforce it?
How, when you think that that would be useful to you as residents, how are you thinking it'd be useful? Would you call the police and say so-and-so's speeding? Or? We, we had an incident up there one time where a car came down that portion of the street and ran through the garage at the end of the street. Now, granted, they were trying to get away from the police, they missed the obvious way to go, and which would have been down the hill, and ran straight through and ran through the house.
For an example, if she's backing out of her driveway and somebody's going fast, I mean, they could be cited for going faster than fifteen, and that's, the police aren't approved with a radar gun, but somebody does get in more trouble because they're going too fast over the speed limit and hitting somebody else, it becomes a driver's problem, potentially, if some of the person backing out.
If we were through instead of the dead end, I'd want to put more thought into it, but if five, if the majority of homeowners in there are for it, if it's a dead end, I don't see why we don't.
And, and I'm fine with putting a sign that says fifteen and something that says narrow road, dead end, or, or something like that.
Well, there's a dead end sign. Whatever we have to do to get, slow the traffic down, like I said, I've been up there forty-five years, and in the past five years, we've had more issues with speeders. And I don't know why or where they're coming from, you know, all of them, but it's, you know, for Fred, here he is, here I am. He's, he, he walks several times a day and is hard of hearing, and vehicles are right on top of him before he realizes it.
If I may.
Yes, sir.
In front of Suzie's house is, if you will, a group in the road. She puts her car under the carport. Unfortunately, anybody headed towards her house for money in, you don't see a vehicle unless you have abreast of her house, which means an oncoming vehicle who is doing more than, much more than, you know, a good car, is likely to not have time to stop.
And as we said, it's either, this is very narrow street, you either, if you have an oncoming vehicle, it's pulling somebody's yard or in a ditch.
Mr. Sessom, could you say any reason why the town board couldn't change it to fifteen to twenty-five?
No, it would be an update to our traffic code.
And just to proceed really briefly, you've always done that by ordinance, I think it's probably the right way to do it. I'm not saying if you enact it, it might even understand that you're passing an ordinance, draft it up. I think we understand what we're doing, I'd be more comfortable with having an ordinance in hand and an improvement of that one next month.
Didn't you say in the package that it would be, it'd be the only fifteen mile per hour in Franklin?
Yeah, currently, the lowest we have is twenty. We have twenty and twenty-five, at the thumb mark, it's thirty-five.
I'd agree with Mr. Collins, I think, put the sign up. It'll help the people who follow the law, but the people who don't, it won't make much difference to them because they know that Chief Harold and his folks are not going to be out there blocking them on a dead end street. So if we can work something out, the ordinance or revision or whatever it might be, to change that, that'd be fine. If that doesn't work, I think we need to pursue some other means to slow folks down. That could be speed humps or speed lumps or something like that.
That would be, you know.
But you could try this first and see if that works. If that doesn't work, there ought, there ought to be another old permit to slow it down and make it safer.
Well, I would appreciate that, we all would appreciate that. Because I've had an issue on town hill. Have you ever had somebody behind you out here and then give you, flip you off and all this stuff because you're observing the speed limit out here? People just don't do it anymore, unfortunately.
I think it's all John's suggestion.
The attorney can work, work on that and make it back to the board for action, so.
I'd like to make a comment, and just in support of what you said, Mr. Mayor Joe, that we ought to look at other mitigations on that street because we have all kinds of signage out here, and it's every day that I risk my life to cross this, this curve wall just to come over here. And the signage just doesn't do it. There ought to be some other mitigation. I think if, if we can do that successfully on their street and protect them, then that might set a precedent for, you know, we can do it in other places.
I think we, the first thing we could do is have the attorney go ahead and work up what he needs to as far as changing the speed limit. And then I think we need to look at legally, what can we do as far as deterrence to speed? Some places have, instead of speed bumps, they have what are called speed humps, which are actually a little bit bigger than just the bump in the road. And it's gotta be legal to do that somehow, I'm not sure if we have the authority to do that.
You do in, in a street or sidewalk that you control, it's not DOT. You do have authority to, to implement traffic control devices. The problem with it is, once you've done it, it's yours for good, for maintenance, to make sure that it's in the right place and working right. You don't want the design to do, and none of us are traffic safety engineers. You'd have to, to me, go the whole distance of getting an approved design and it's in a good place. And so it'd be a pretty involved thing to actually get it done, but I think my plan is to keep it.
Okay.
In pursuit of that.
Thank you.
Ms. Owens, our town manager has some requests for street closures.
Yes, sir, we have three requests for street closure. The first one being in Nafosi Lane for the Trevor Tier National Conference, which is going to be on September the twentieth. They only need a portion of Nafosi Lane closed, and they will need some assistance from our police department related to helping individuals cross back and forth because there will be, um, one hundred and fifty mill over at the main spring office, and then everyone will come over to the mound, so that request has been made. Also to close Iola Street on October the eighth for an event sponsored by the Arts Council of Macon County. They're going to have some entertainment at the gazebo, and they just want to make sure everybody has the opportunity to sit there and listen to the music and do it in a safe manner. The other one is a portion of Carolina Mountain Drive for fundraiser at Alter Frequency by Skate Two Eight. That's on October the twenty-ninth. There is another event going on that same night, but the hours are different. That's when we do our trick-or-treating downtown, so Main Street will be closed from about four-thirty until seven-thirty, but that closure will be offset at that point. They can still use West Palmer to get around. But everyone has filled out the appropriate paperwork and submitted it, so no issues with it.
Police department have any issues with any of these?
Question to approve?
We have a motion to approve. Is there a second?
Thank you.
Mr. Lewis, motion is second, and discussion. Here are none of all those who favor the motion, please take a five or raise your hand. Opposed with like sign, motion carries. We have a request, we've had a request from our ABC board for assistance on the vehicle because of the state's new law mandating that ABC stores deliver to wholesalers. And so, yeah, make sure you distinguish that, I'm not home. If you're doing this out of your house, you're probably illegal. But, but they are required, and I've talked to some of the board members, and Mr. Collins has as well, and our town manager has. We have a two thousand nine Ford Escape that could be transferred to the ABC for, ABC Board for mandatory delivery services. So our town manager may want you, do you have any additional information?
I just wanted to let you know that we do have to legally declare a surplus. There is no value to the town at this point, it's been depreciated out due to its age. It is still very functioning and it runs well, and the ABC board is willing to accept it. So what we would need to do would just be to surplus this item, and then we could transfer the title over to the ABC board.
So you just need a motion to surplus it and also give it to the ABC, or do you need both?
I would say both, just to make sure we've got it.
Yeah, two different motions, one motion to surplus, the other motion would be to transfer. Is there, is there, is there a motion to surplus a two thousand nine Ford Escape previously used by the police department? I'll move, Mr. Lewis makes a motion, second, Mr. Colpepper, any discussion? Here are none of all those who favor the motion, please take a five or raise your hand. Opposed with like sign, that motion carries. Is there another motion concerning the disposition of the two thousand nine Ford Escape? So they make a motion to transfer it to the ABC Board at no cost?
Yep.
That's your motion, is there a second? Thank you, Mr. Lewis seconds the motion, any discussion?
Amy, did you say that they weren't?
Yes.
Hey, Rob. Two thousand nine Ford Escape?
Hunk, we don't want the trunk?
I'm still grabbing a nineteen seventy-eight, so that's a possible.
Well, I'm, I'm just thinking how small it is, but anyway.
No, at this point, we only have thirteen to sixteen, depending on the businesses that are required to be able to request deliveries.
I'm trying to do it again.
Correct.
Because of the cost, because they're not doing this pretty often.
I have to live in office closet at two eighty-three.
With them, I don't know what they need at this point.
You can make it happen if you want to.
Are we in a motion? On a second, to transfer this vehicle to the ABC Board at no cost. Any discussion? All those who favor the motion, please take a five or raise your hand. Opposed with like sign, that motion carries. Congratulations, you have a vehicle.
Thank you.
As you deal with our, our town manager, he'll make sure the proper paperwork is signed and transferred legally to the ABC board.
Thank you.
Got to hang a disco ball and some dice from here to there.
It's all on the wheels, Dave.
Anybody want to put a bumper sticker on it, they can, not Rhonda?
I can, yes. Not maybe on the board, but whatever.
Thank you, precious cargo.
Yeah, there you go.
Under all this, we have a request for the budget amendment. We discussed that last meeting for the prorated longevity payout that the board had approved previously. Finance Director Sarah Bishop is making that request to go ahead and put that into budget. So it can be spent, you can't spend it unless it's appropriated, and you can't appropriate unless it's in the budget.
I can't do that without you guys.
Without, without approval of the board.
Yeah, so if you guys would take a look at this budget amendment, this is based on the numbers we've talked about. We just figured there are benefits that needed to go along with it. This is the total amount we need to be able to fund that project.
And this buries it for good, it's done. It's over, all lanes are in.
We, we will pay the ones that have submitted the release, if they haven't, then that fund will be there until June thirtieth at that point.
But our liability will be done after this, is.
After June thirtieth.
So we've.
We have a motion to approve it, second?
Second.
For a second. Mr. Lewis, motion second, any discussion? Here are none of all those who favor, please take a five or raise your hand. Unanimous? Motion is approved. We also have a, a, an item for a budget amendment for the adjustment to our police salaries. And both our finance director and town manager have been working on this. They request a budget amendment, the board to put that into money and put those funds into the budget so they can be dispersed in accordance with the recommendation approved by the board as recommended by our town manager. That motion on this line, second?
Second.
Second, Mr. Collins, discussion. Here are none of all those who favor the motion, please take a five or raise your hand. Opposed with like sign, motion passes. Item C was removed. Item D, request from the board for direction concerning the state revolving loan fund. This has to do with our water plant improvements, and I'll ask our town manager to bring the board up to speed on that.
As you know, we were approved for eight point eight million dollars for, from the state revolving fund program with a five hundred thousand dollar forgiveness. Unfortunately, when they did the preliminary engineering review based on material costs and things moving forward, that cost for those renovations jumped to twelve point eight million dollars. We have been able to work with the designers as they're working on this space to plan, to change up some of the ways that they were looking at it. Instead of mirroring the basins, we were actually using new settling basins, new equipment inside those, new technology, which would allow us to utilize the current ones. So doing away with all the concrete and stuff that we would be looking at takes it down about two point two million dollars. However, we still have a deficit of about two point five million dollars. There are funds still out there available. We just have to request them, and since my authority to request and pay things only goes to thirty thousand dollars, not two point five million, I bring that back to you as one option. Another option to consider is to go back to the engineers and say, you've got eight point eight million dollars, make it work. And knowing that there's the potential to not do everything that we need to do at this time altogether, again, that would be yet another phase we would have to look at later on. Or we could take the funds where the deficit falls after the construction is done, throw them out, which nobody, I'm sure, wants to do.
We did apply for a grant for five million dollars, and we weren't successful in that grant, so. We have a project that's ready to go, but we're gonna, if you're gonna, if you're gonna complete the project as redesigned with the, with the recommendations of the engineer, you're gonna have to have a little over two million dollars. And the only place that you can get it from at this point in time is through the state revolving loan fund. Mr. Colpepper?
I know I ask this every single meeting that we talk about this. What is our timeline on getting this done?
Construction is slated to begin in August next year.
But when do we have to get it done by?
You have three years after the contract is approved to do the construction and get it.
I know that, I mean, when will we as a town require this to actually be online? Because this is a, this is a phase-in thing, we're choosing to do it sooner rather than later.
Please come fast if you do.
Right, we're just doubling the capacity.
No, no, I, I know that, that's what, that's what I'm saying, I mean, there's a timeline here that we can be flexible with. I mean, I'm, I'm gonna advocate dragging our feet until the cost of construction comes down, not drag our feet for six, ten years. If we can drag our feet for twenty-four months, I mean, this thing can come down just like it shot up in price.
We'll have to check with the state on the conditions of our loan agreement, because it's already a year and a half into.
So if we hadn't already agreed to the loan, we could drag our feet because what is, if you're within eighty percent capacity, you have to have, you have to have a definite certain amount of time, but we've already entered into this long agreement.
Right, so we were, we would have to finish the design at this point, and then it would need to be bid. The construction is slated to begin in August of next year.
Okay, I mean, is there?
According to the state schedule.
That's what I'm saying, is there a methodology to reach out to the state and say, hey, look, this is unprecedented times. I mean, they're going to do the same thing, DOT doesn't even have a budget, I don't think anymore, it's just blown up. So I mean, like, it's not, we're not lying, I mean, the cost for everything is like really expensive right now. And if they could allow us a, a grace period to see if this thing comes down some, the, the two million dollar shortfall could miraculously appear, but you can't build what we needed to build.
Let me just briefly offer, I have a lot of clients with a lot of projects out in, in the wind. We got caught in the middle of all this, and the, the general advice that they're getting is don't count on anything coming down real fast. In the foreseeable future, they're saying this is not going anywhere. A lot of them would love to have a ready source for two million dollars, not making it a small thing, but a ready source of funds that they know they can get and get their project back on track.
And that's not to say that the bids wouldn't come in lower now that we've made some modifications to the design.
Well, it is, every, every, every builder of, of, of any shape or size, from a house to a scotch paper, is, has been booked for the past year and a half, two years out. So I mean, as the economy slows, because money's not getting thrown at everybody from every direction, like, those people, their time's gonna be freed up a little bit more. When your time's freed up a little bit more, you can think, you can bid. I mean, when I've been getting containers recently, it's twenty-five grand in shipping. I mean, that's starting to come back down to twelve grand, to seven grand, to eight grand, like, we're starting to normalize a little bit. So yes, I agree, it is gonna take some time, twelve months, twenty-four months, something like that. But if we have a window to be able to drag here, I don't know, I think, I, I think we take as long of a window as we're allowed to try to kick this thing down the road and see where we get from there.
Let me ask you, get the timetable, we're saying that construction will start next year, August of twenty twenty-three. And what was the, what was the estimated length of construction time? We know.
Eighteen to twenty months to do everything with the previous plan that we had, so there would be some.
So the construction starts in August, say, August of twenty twenty-three. When would, when, when would you go to bids for that project?
And, and that's, and I think that's part of the problem, and what we're seeing a lot of is, and David, take your example, it's not what the shipping container costs you right now. You're asking, you put out the bids and ask people that are contractors in this kind of field, what, what can you tell me you could do this for in, beginning in August, and when you're out the bids in like, May, June, maybe somewhere in there? And so what's happening is they're, like, I don't know where the costs are going, and they, the bids go crazy. So we've been trying to find ways to depress that some, but I mean, the, the bottom line has been, you've got to come up to these estimates. the, the bottom line has been, you've got to come up to these estimates to get a project even off the ground, or you get stuck.
I guess the problem I'm having, a hard time wrapping my head around, is that I'm completely willing to gamble my own money, maybe not the town's money, on prices coming down within the next few years. Like, it's just, it's gonna happen. If we had a window to slow the process down that would not hurt us, that could possibly benefit us, that would be good. Because as long as we agree to pay the eight point eight million dollars, the price isn't coming down. I mean, there, that's what it's gonna cost us.
Well, you don't know that for sure until you put it out for bids. And then there's also a possibility it may be delayed by no fault of ours. If all the bids come in higher than the money we have available to pay for, that could put it down the road for another six months.
But back to gambling my own money, I gamble my own money that whatever the contract comes out, it's gonna cost that much. It's also gonna go over. That's the way the building projects come and go in municipal government. So we need to be as frugal as possible in this, because it's gonna cost a lot. It's not an emergency that we get it done right now. It's something that we want to do, because we're gonna need the capacity in ten years. But right now, I think we have a window, and if we can somehow manipulate it, stack it in our favor, I advocate for that.
But I hear you saying that they're in the window.
We have the schedule that the state sent to us.
Look, the window, the window is, we've already obligated so much money that we're gonna borrow from the state, and they're not gonna leak that open forever.
I had a doubt. What's the, what's the probability of, of increase of the two point five million in the revolving fund?
Usually they're happy to let you borrow more money because they know that you're gonna have to pay them back.
But we're not, we're not having to pay it back until we use it, right?
Well, once the construction is completed and stuff, then we have a payment schedule that we have to do every year to get back.
We've already agreed to a loan. They've already agreed to give it to us. But, I mean, that's their job, is to give us loans. Let's walk through an example again. If we say, nah, thank you for the offer, loaded us eight point whatever million dollars it is, but we're gonna, you know, we're gonna wait, we're gonna reapply, then are they gonna say, no, we don't wanna lend you eight million dollars a year from now?
There is that potential, yes. Because they've already granted it to us. We've already been one year into the cycle.
But they didn't, they didn't grant it. They're not gonna give it to us. They just said, we will give you a loan.
They granted us the loan.
Yes, and then we pay them interest.
But we do have the five hundred thousand dollars worth of forgiveness with this offer that we may not have in the future.
So why do you get to have a money and offer? See what we can find out. I don't have a problem just based on the, on the application process.
Well, you can't do anything, you can't even go out to bid unless you can show that you've got money available to pay for the project.
And right now, we don't, but...
Not unless, not unless you approve the, allow the finance director or the town manager to go ahead and ask for additional borrowing power from the town.
Well, they're gonna need that ability, but I think we need to give them the ability to go to the state and say, hey, we're in a pickle. We wanna save money. I mean, it's, it's responsible to our people to do that. But yeah, they need both authorities. They need the authority to negotiate with the state on the line of credit, the loan they're extending us, and the ability to ask for more money if the state says no.
I think another factor we're gonna have to put into it is how long, how, or how long is your engineering team going to say these are good plans, go to bid move? Because they might not be okay with shelving for two years and then come back to you.
But we can ask them that, too.
Yeah.
Only knows what the state and federal government's gonna require in two or three months. But there's no way to know what it's gonna be in six months or twelve months from now. There's no way to know. And, and it could be, if, if we ask and get approval for two million dollars more, that still may not be enough.
You're right. I mean, this started off as a, I think it was a five to six million dollar plan that was gonna be a good idea, and now it's a twelve million dollar plan that is, it's a lot more. And, and especially considering, we still have water. Like, we have quite a bit of water. We're being overly responsible by doing this in this window.
I just watched Jackson, Mississippi, and think, we're...
But we're not, we're not there, though.
Where are, where are we asking then? Because I know that at eighty percent, you're supposed to be breaking ground on our eyes. Like, at sixty, you're supposed to be, what, drawing up lands or whatnot. I mean, there's ranges for...
Right, because currently our capacity is two billion gallons a day, and that's running wide open total amount.
I'm sorry, I was asking you a question. What was the question?
Capacity.
State's capacity, what are we running at?
As a percentage of total capacity.
Right now, in the summertime, we're running one point two, one point three, depending on the days. But I think the biggest concern is maintenance and issues on the current plant. So we do have some issues with, if we can't, if we have to take one side of the plant down, then we're only running on one side of the plant, and that capacity then decreases by half. So that's where we're looking at. But right now, we're running about one point two, one point three a day.
I think you made it. You, you said it right when you said this is the responsible thing to do over ahead of the game, which is why I would support to guess your number, wanting to go back and see if we get the two point five increase. While we still have this window and while we have that, that forgiveness.
You can't wait until you need it and then start, because you'd be way behind the eight ball then. You, you've got a plan ahead, just like they do on highways and everything else, but you, you can't, you can kick the can down the road a little bit, but in the long run, if the town's gonna grow, and it is, you're gonna have to have water.
Yeah, you know, yeah, David, what David is saying makes all kinds of sense in a business, private enterprise world we're just not living in. And I'm, I'm gonna have to say, good idea, but not this time.
Outta boy, get out of here, huh?
I'm still happy to reach out and ask the question.
I think we, I, I think it, it doesn't hurt us to ask, no communication. Ask the state and ask our engineers, how long is this, what's the show left on this?
I mean, can we make the motion, though, so you have the decision, but you can still ask?
Is there a motion that we authorize the manager and finance director to go ahead and request additional funds from the State Revolving Loan Fund to meet the gap that we're now experiencing based on the engineers' estimate of the probable construction cost?
Is that a motion? Mr. Allen?
Yes, so moved.
And is there a second? Right here. Second, Mr. Lewis. Now, is there discussion? I'm sure there are.
There is.
I have a follow-up question. We applied for a five million dollar grant. It was denied, although we thought we were gonna be super successful in our endeavor. And then we reapplied, and we have been denied again?
No, the reapplication is actually this, in September, and then we'll know a little bit later about the issue.
So we're gonna go ahead and allocate the two million dollars, though, or to ask the state for the two million dollars. But simultaneously, we are asking for the five million dollar grant again, of which we were overly optimistic the first time, and now we're cautiously optimistic.
And if they give us two and a half million, then we're good.
Any other discussion? Questions? You've heard the motion. All those in favor of the motion, please take the top or raise your hand. Close the like side. That's unanimous. Okay. Items from the council. We'll start on the left side of the line. Mr. Allen, do you have any items?
No, I will make some comments to follow up with the discussion about the folks who came here from Riverview Heights. Speeding is a problem everywhere in the town, frankly, and Amy and I have had this discussion a couple of times, and I've talked to the chief about it, and it's every day that I have people here on Main Street complaining about it. If we're gonna have a kind of town, town and, and these neighborhoods where people can live and walk safely, and children can play, then we need to address speed.
So what is the issue? That we just don't do tickets? I mean, I know the issue's big, but the remedy?
I would argue that, so for a street like Main Street, part of it is the way it's designed, it's designed as a, it's designed in the...
As a highway.
Sixties as a highway. As a thoroughfare through town, and that's, I think it's outlived that use. Now that we're looking at people revitalizing their businesses on Main Street, people bounding outside, more families walking on the streets. If that's the direction we're going, then we need to, probably need to look at the design of that street. In the neighborhoods, it's gotta find a place to slow people down, and I'm not opposed to installing things like speed bumps or the, or the larger mitigation device.
That's what Hendersonville does certainly down town, so you, you can't go too fast. If they're, you got, you got to take it slow. There are ways that you can slow that. Mr. Lewis?
Uh, reiterate your gratitude to Town Works. Fantastic job. I also want to, the last couple of weeks, I've noticed the Garden Club, it's been parked around Town Square and Rankin Square, and I just wanna thank them for what they do. They really keep that place looking tall and large. I know Amy, maybe got some ideas to collaborate with them on a few other things, and I think that'd be great. But just gonna tell them, thank you for what they do, because they don't get paycheck. That's all involved there, and I think everyone will enjoy what they do, so. Thank them for that.
Thank you, Mike. Mr. Kim, is it?
Uh, nothing major. I would like to thank the Merch Association, Animal Artists Festival, we can tell it by the rain, but so far, Town Town, uh, it goes in downtown, so thanks to them.
Good comments, good comments on that. Ms. Lane?
Again, to the town people for getting those pipes fixed as quickly as possible, and to Amy for being there and keeping people, their spirits and their energy level up with food and other kinds of things. I think it's, it speaks so well of Franklin about, I wanna say yay team. I mean, it just...
Did you use tall rubber boots?
Actually showed my tennis shoes and stuff, so wasn't planning on being that far down in it, but I got there, that far down here.
And I agree with Mike. I, if I hear, I mean, one of the things that people talk about quite often is how beautiful the flowers are. I'm very disappointed about those that, on the bridge, but these flowers are gorgeous. I reiterate, thank the Garden Club, too.
Yeah, definite kudos to, to town staff and Public Works for the, for the water lines. Echoing what Stacy said, yeah, we do have a, a speeding problem in a lot of neighborhoods in downtown. Anecdotally, I have noticed that people who tend to be pedestrians and walk about drive slower than people who aren't up about, because they, they know what it feels like when you're outside of a car, walking in an area. You know what it feels like to have a car zoom by you. So part of our effort can be to make pedestrian access and opportunities more available in town, get more people walking about so that they notice when somebody flies down through there. And I think we're doing that. We are laying sidewalk or trying to lay sidewalk and doing pedestrian friendly things. That's how I think you get people to slow down and actually let them see a car going too fast by them closely. And that kind of puts a earworm in them.
General agreement with the previous caller. Mr. Mayor, can I make, can you come back one more round? I'd like to thank...
I'll save my time.
Since, since we're, since we're on the bankies, every morning when I come out of the apartment, come down to the street, one of our employees, Mr. Keener, is out watering and taking care of those plants. He does an amazing job.
I'll make one call there. We have a terrific team of employees in this town. Our Public Works folks did an outstanding job attacking those issues and getting water back on and repairing those things. Not once, but they've had three of those issues to deal with. But you know, they say you can have the best players on the team of any other team in the league, but if you don't have the right coach, you can't win. I'd like to thank our town manager, our coach, for working with our guys out there and gals out there. We really put forth an effort, and it's paying off. I have heard a lot of good, positive comments from folks all over town about the beauty of the powers, the response for the water breaks and so forth, and just how much they appreciate Franklin. And so when you read rants and raves, and you get more good than bad, you know something must be going right. So thank you. Thank you, Amy, and thank you all for what you do. We have a closed session under one forty-three, three eighteen eleven to discuss the acquisition of real property, purchase, option, or exchange, or lease. Is there a motion that we go into closed session under those categories? I'll move. Thank you. Mr. Lewis, second. Mr. Culpepper?
Got it.
Any discussion? If not, all those in favor, please take the top or raise your hand. Close the like side. Motion carries. We'll now leave closed session.